Okay, let's open up the Cunningham Township, I mean the Urbana City Council meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Persson Barnes?
Here.
Bowers Socks?
Here.
Chenoweth?
Present.
Lewis?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Smythe?
Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing?
Here. First item is approval of minutes of the previous meeting, which is April 21st. Motion by Ms. Stevenson, seconded by Ms. Barnes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? All right, we'll move on to petitions and communications. There are people who would like to address the Urbana City Council. Our first one I have is Rhona James. Is Rhona here? Would you please state your name and address?
Yes.
And if it's something you've already talked about, could you please limit it to two minutes?
Uh, doubt it. Rhona James.
Okay.
For ten. One of us to drive champagne. Um, let's see, two minutes. Well, should I go with the anger or should I go with the heart? I think I'll go with the heart.
If we only have two minutes, could we have the microphone on? Or would you rather we adjourn to the floor?
This is it? Okay, am I on the microphone now? Okay. All right, two minutes. Let's see. Well, maybe I should let you know that it is Holocaust remembrance month. I don't know if all of you know that. Last night, I was at the memorial service over at Sinai Temple. It was really sad. It was beautiful and it was sad. It was, if you'd seen how many people stood up when they asked how many are in the congregation who had family members or who were victims themselves, who died in concentration camps. It could break your heart. That's actually the people who I'm most concerned with in our community. And I was remembering back when I was young in the 50s, and I lived in East LA. And I came from a house, a kosher house, and we had to travel, not on Saturday, you're not allowed to drive then, but on Sunday, to go to an area called Fairfax, where that was a Jewish area, to buy the meat and buy the, you know, everything. And they had a farmer's market. The vegetables were all outside. And it was, you know, Southern California, very sunny and warm and whatever. And I remember even as a kid noticing the people at the market with the numbers tattooed on their arms. And it was nothing like our farmer's market, with all of, you know, the music and the conversation and meeting with your neighbors and running into people. It was nothing like that. It was quite eerie, really. It was people who I wondered, what nightmares had they woken up with that morning? And how did they even manage to get dressed, brush their teeth, let alone try to figure out, do I want a tomato, do I want whatever? There was no conversation out in the market. It was silent. It was just sort of reach, grab, put in the bag, reach, whatever, silence, silence. It was, it stayed with me forever. To think that those people, the few, or a lot, I don't know how many we have here in our community, would inadvertently turn on that program that I by mistake turned on that day, and the traumatic shock to them, I feel that it would maybe weigh quite heavily on your hearts and minds to cause them more stress and distress. I don't really know if watching that affected me so horrifically, what exactly it would do to them. I want you to think about that. I want you to think about voting your conscience. If you can change your mind on Walmart, you can change your mind on this. This is, vote from your heart. Think of them.
Thank you. Could you also limit your remarks to two minutes? Thank you.
Well, I'm afraid my friend Rhona thinks she's going to approach you with hearts, but that's not going to be it. I think the handwriting's on the wall. And so, given that, I'd like to put a number of questions forth to the UPTV people, even though they may not be here tonight. And I'm very concerned about what will be in the future on your programming, on open, you know I love calling it abscess. My first question will be, will the city be able to guarantee effective time slots to combat the anti-Semitic films that will be shown in the future? In other words, will you be able to provide, as discussed on April 28th, time slots preceding and following films of an anti-Semitic nature, so that we can help to defuse the damage that's going to be done and has been done in this community? Two, who on the UPT staff will police for content and appropriate time slots? The feeling I've gotten so far is that it's all very laissez-faire, that you are going to continue to trust the people bringing the films in to fill out all the relevant information, which they have not done in the past. And I'd like to know how you'll guarantee that for the future, or you'll only know after the fact, when somebody comes very angry about what was shown and shouldn't have been. And number three, if UPTV is going to permit the showing of virulently anti-Semitic films, why not at least at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning? I know that there's a history here, that you move them from 5:00 to 11:00, but I'd like to see them at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. And number four, can the city be held liable for not enforcing its own guidelines, because you certainly have not in the past? And will you be penalizing those who break the guidelines, because I think they've gotten a little slap on the wrist in the past? Thank you.
Thank you. Could you also limit your remarks to two minutes? I think you talked about this before.
Excuse me?
Could you please limit your remarks to two minutes? I believe you testified on this before also.
Yes, I have.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Morton Brussels, 2003, George Updrav, Urbana. So I just have a short statement. As has often been the case in recent times, fear seems brought forward to support restrictive civil policies. Thus have our civil rights, with the Patriot Act and the denial of habeas corpus, been abrogated by the federal government. Thus has surveillance of private lives been increased. Thus has going to the airport been made an inconvenient, if not painful, experience. And now we have the fear that an individual can corrupt our youth and others with anti-Semitic rants on UPTV that can be used to abrogate free access to all on our public access TV As I've stated before, what is hateful speech cannot be well-defined for all and in all circumstances. Moreover, who can judge what is hateful speech is in itself somewhat arbitrary. I state again, and I want to reiterate, that there is no outbreak of antisemitism in this country today. Much more serious problems confront us. I say this from the experience of my years. As a boy, I saw antisemitism here in the 1930s and 1940s, so I know that the situation today is in no way like it was then. In fact, Israel, the so-called land of the Jewish people, seems to be beyond criticism by the body politic here in the United States, irrespective of what policies it follows. It should by now be evident that the proper response to the hated anti-Semitic videos has occurred, with all the publicity here in the city council and in the News Gazette to condemn the perpetrator. That is the appropriate response, not shutting down the airwaves to stuff we don't like. An open society has to tolerate all views, in doing so exposing those views and subjecting them to criticism.
Thank you. Esther Pat.
Thank you. Mayor Pressing and members of the city council, you have a very difficult job. I know one of the hardest things about sitting in those seats is the, what probably seems sometimes like an endless stream of people coming to you, asking you to do things that you cannot do. And especially when the people are sincere and their concerns are legitimate and passionate, it's especially hard to have to say no. But you did each take an oath of office pledging to uphold the US Constitution. And as your city attorney very well explained in the memo that you received a couple of weeks ago, the law is quite clear, not only on the Constitution prohibiting you from censorship, but even, there have even been cases where cities have shut down public access channels to keep the Klan off, and the Klan has sued, and the Klan has won, because the courts are very strong in supporting free speech and prohibiting censorship. There are many, many ways that each of you as an individual and you as a council can protest against antisemitism and can promote tolerance and understanding without violating your oath of office. And I encourage you to engage in those activities. And thank you for what appears to be your commitment to be faithful to your oath and to support the Constitution, even when doing so is going to upset a lot of people who have very deeply felt legitimate concerns about the hate that is out there in this country against the Jewish people. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Kaufman, have you spoken on this before? Okay, would you please limit your remarks to five minutes?
Mayor Pressing, members of the council, my name is Stephen Kaufman. I live at 4 Burnett Circle in Urbana. I have not seen the program in question. I have heard and discussed this issue with other people. And I understand, having been a participant in a First Amendment suit, some of the ramifications of that and where one is and where one isn't justified. The hateful villainous speech portrayed in this document has no justification to be on TV, nor is there justification to take it off of the TV because of its offensiveness. At the same time, in maintaining that premise of free speech, I encourage all of you to use your free speech and speak out strongly, in all your capacities, in all the venues that you can, why you don't find this acceptable part of Urbana life. And continue to identify the person who's perpetrating this, in name, in address, and in photos. I think people would like to know when they're standing next to him online at a grocery store. I would also like to encourage you to encourage all ministers, rabbis, and clergy of all faiths to speak out on this issue, which is, in this moment, one of the strongest, most significant moral and ethical issues in this town. We can go to church and synagogue and mosque and hear about, hear sermons about things far off, but here we have a moral and ethical issue confronting the city. And instead of the silence that we hear from our moral, most moral and ethical leaders, the clergy, we should have vociferous discussion and use this as an educational opportunity. From the churches, we should be in the schools, using this as an opportunity to educate young people as to how hateful speech actually hurts, because you've heard from a lot of people how it actually hurts. So without infringing upon the Constitution of the United States, this can be a very meaningful time for the education of Urbana and its citizens, and probably most importantly, its children, to use this as a focal for discussion, to lead us out of cycles such as the one we're in now, of generating hate speech and indifference to hate speech. Okay? And I urge you to use your leadership roles to further that educational opportunity and to bring it to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Dwayne Bergren. I wonder if you would please limit your remarks to two minutes, since you've spoken about this before.
What rule are you indulging?
The rules of the city council.
I didn't time my own speech.
Okay, well, we've asked people who have spoken on it before to limit their remarks to two minutes.
Certainly you have, but I asked you why.
It is. It is part of the city council rules.
Good. Good. Just to be clear. How often I've thought of a tagline from Shakespeare that you don't hear that often these days. He jests at scars who never felt a wound. And I'd like to echo the last speaker's concern that some of the people that have been so earnest to defend free speech move out into the community and be a little more visible and vocal about protecting the group that's being defamed systematically. I published this in the News Gazette some time ago. Timothy Brumleeve of Urbana is a problem for the commissioners and viewers of Urbana Public Access Television. Admitting a fixation with conspiracy theories, he is bent on broadcasting his videos of the same on Channel 6, regardless of their falsity and their capacity to excite prejudice and hatred. The UPTV commissioners, and I'll add a phrase that isn't in the letter, and councils seem baffled or indifferent to answering the complaints of people defamed by Brumleeve's videos, and I should have said not only defamed, but upset. Their policy is that the US Constitution requires our free speech forum to allow any tireless uncivil libertarian to broadcast wrong-headed ideas and push free speech toward a free-for-all. Nice phrase, don't you think? We could do better. And I'm very disappointed, this letter was published in October last year, and I don't see that the council has done better, or its committees. The free market of ideas has the same sort of problem with bad thinking that an economic free market has with counterfeit money, I would say. The fake stuff, undetected, depreciates the good. I had some positive suggestions every time I've spoken to you. In this case, I said, let's use live appearance and the truth in product labeling practices to give viewers more information about programs and sponsors instead of broadcasting what were handed. And I want to tell you that I have never recommended that Mr. Brumleeve or anyone else that's peddling this crap be denied a soapbox. But I fail to see why, when I have to sign statements to various government agencies, that I have prepared a statement that reflects the true accounting of my income, that when I take an oath before our jury system that I will tell the truth, when I know that every household, at least I think that I know of, has a standard of truth-telling for their children, I fail to see why a man is excused from the consequences of telling a lie when he submits it in a tape. Couldn't he be asked simply to excise the false, the historically false part and play the program? Well, I would say whenever a program airs, require its local sponsor to appear in a video at its beginning and end, to identify himself, herself, explain its, describe its content, explain its value. You have the production facilities? Second, the commission should add to a sponsor's introduction the disclaimer. See, this was in October when I thought things might be handled with more dispatch. A disclaimer, if objective fault finding, fact finding, fault finding, excuse me, if objective fact finding identifies program information specifically enumerated that is untrue, deceptive, or contrary to the spirit and purposes of the ordinances in effect in the broadcast area, or which otherwise militates against common personal welfare. I started to send into abstraction, I'm a little puzzled. After all, when we bring a container of poisonous stuff into our home, it's only reasonable to clearly label its contents. And again, I emphasize, I'm not denying any of these hate spewers time on the air. I'm just saying, deny them the opportunity to perpetrate the falsehoods that are, that can be demonstrated by recourse to a good encyclopedia or a history book. Thank you for your two minutes.
Anyone else want to address the council?
I would like to read a proclamation on a totally different subject, and this is concerning historic preservation. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, whereas the city of Urbana has a historic preservation plan and currently has locally designated seven historic landmarks and three historic districts, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas this place matters is the theme for National Preservation Month 2008, co-sponsored by the Urbana Historic Preservation Commission and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore, I, Laurel Lynn Pressing, Mayor of the city of Urbana, do hereby proclaim May 2008 as National Historic Preservation Month in the city of Urbana, Illinois, and call upon the people of Urbana to join in their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. And I think we have the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission here. Did you want to speak about this? Go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you all very much for your support. I believe it's all been in the last 12 months that you have allowed historic preservation commissioners to make applications for landmark designation, historic district designation, and you have approved the demolition delay, which has been very effective, and we'll see how much more effective that can be as well. And also you've enacted the permit fee waivers as a beginning of an incentive program that we can offer for local designations. So thank you very much, and this place does matter.
Thank you. All right, moving on, I don't believe we have any old business. Reports of standing committees?
I can do that.
That's Lynn Barnes.
First item is ordinance number 2008-03015, an ordinance submitting Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Urbana, Illinois, regarding the schedule of fees. On behalf of the committee of the whole, I so move.
I see Ron Eldridge. Is it possible to delay this, or does this have to be acted on tonight? I think it's effective July 1st, and I did have some questions about the liquor fees.
Well, the difficulty is, is we really need to, the licenses have to be enforced, paid by July 1, ahead of time, and we really have delayed sending out our notices to the license holders and permit holders, to give them a certain amount of time to pay and prepare the paperwork too, so.
Because they would have a whole month in June if we did it later in May.
Typically, we have in the past done it in April. If we delay it, if we delayed it a week or two weeks, you know, I think that we can handle that, but I don't think it can go anything beyond that. We need to, we need to get those out to the license holders and give them enough time ahead of time.
Okay. Reason I raised the issue is I talked with a restaurant owner who thought there was inequity, and I kind of agreed with her, so I'd like to, if you wouldn't mind, delay it and talk about it at the committee meeting next week, and then do it the two weeks from now. Mr. Smythe?
Alternatively, we could approve this and still go forward and then amend it.
Either way.
You know, how difficult would it be? That way you've got everything else but the one issue. If it's just one issue, we could just put it on the agenda and fix that part later. And then Ron could proceed with everything else. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, because we're talking about lowering something, so I think they would be happy.
We would just not send out the ones that are affected by that one particular change.
Okay.
I'll second. I'll second the motion.
Okay, so there was a motion by Ms. Barnes and seconded by Mr. Lewis. Any other comments?
Let's see, do we need an additional motion of some kind to send this, to send this piece to committee, or can it automatically put on the next committee agenda?
Yeah, we can just put it on.
Yeah, it'll be brought back.
Because it's a revision to an ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, all those, no, this is an ordinance. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Persson Barnes?
Yes.
Bowers Socks?
Yes.
Chenoweth?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Smythe?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries.
Next item is ordinance number 2008-04029, an ordinance submitting Chapter 3 alcoholic liquors of the Code of Ordinance of the city of Urbana, Illinois, regarding temporary licenses. On behalf of the committee of the whole, I so move.
Mr. Smythe?
I'd just like to thank Ron for making the changes that he did. I think this makes this a little easier ordinance to use. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Danielle?
I just have a couple of questions. The first is, how does us passing this affect existing for-profit events that are contracted through the UBA?
What we're trying to do is avoid going through the UBA, because there were some difficulties in terms of who's the actual liquor license holder.
I understand that.
So.
Does this not void their contracts then?
I don't think there is a, I don't think there is a contract.
I don't think.
Do have an exist, the Beer and Chili Cook-Off has an existing contract that's a three-year contract with the UBA. So the question is, well, how does this impact that contract?
The problem that they have, and it's one of the things that precipitated us actually moving in this direction, is that in the past, that contract has called for UBA to be the special event holder as well as the liquor license holder, but they're not running the event. It's a, it's a. It's a private for-profit entity. So, it's my belief that once this ordinance is passed, they'll have to revisit it.
Okay.
They'll have to revisit their contract, and it may become unnecessary for them to even have contracts. So, once a contract's signed, it can also be voided if both sides are amenable to that.
Okay. And is there somebody from the UBA who's here tonight who could speak to, what, a representative of the UBA here to speak about this issue?
I'm not here to speak about it, but we, of course, discussed it at the board. We are expected to have another contract. We had one drafted, I believe, and we're going to open one now.
With Beer and Chili Cookoff?
We have not yet approved all that.
Okay.
And I want to add something too, that, I can't speak for the whole board, but I know at least the executive director has been aware that we're doing this, and this is coming about from discussions with their legal counsel, as well as the executive director of UBA.
Okay, the second question I have is what the, it's difficult because we don't, I have been trying to contact the executive director, but because of all the activities from the Build Urbana Home Parade this last weekend, this was a terrible time to try to have conversations. So, I'm just lacking certain basic information about UBA's official position, the board position, and the director's position on this. The second question I have, and I don't know if you can answer this, is the effect that this would have on UBA activities and income. So, there's that question, because I think the UBA receives income from for-profit events currently, and I just, I want to understand all the impacts of decisions that we're making.
I have to be honest with you, you know, I can't, that's a private agreement between UBA, which is a private not-for-profit, and another entity, so it would be inappropriate for me to speak to that issue, and I don't know in any case.
Okay. And then I guess the third question I have, which is specifically focused on Urbana, is just so I understand, if we pass this, what the consequences are? So, if we pass this ordinance, have we looked at what the effect is on staff time? It's my understanding, from the last seven years of watching this transpire, that the UBA was contracted with the city of Urbana to act as a liaison for certain kinds of events, et cetera, and that that's a role that they've played, such that they then have staff time committed to the hand-holding of all the different threads that come about putting on an event. And so, the question I had was, who at the city is going to do all the things that the person at the UBA did? Is this a new person position who will do that? Are there budget impacts to that, or is it the case that we're going to absorb that new work internally?
If you look at the ordinance, all this does is create a new category of temporary liquor license. It doesn't create any new objective for the city in terms of work that has to be done. It's only a mechanism that allows private entities to be able to have access to a temporary liquor license, where before they couldn't have one. But part of the problem previously is that UBA was acting almost as if they were like a straw man, if you will, in terms of having the special event permit and the liquor license. Well, that's problematic, because there's an issue of who does the city hold accountable when things go awry, as can sometimes happen at large public events. So, I don't know if you're speaking on a specific language item in this amendment or not, but there's nothing that's been drafted that creates any new burden for any city staff.
Okay, so, well, for example, there's a couple, so it's possible that what would happen next is that, you know, five people want to put on events at the city, and they're for-profit events. In each case, they might approach the city directly, or they might approach UBA. UBA, as a supporter of business, might participate in helping to coordinate with that person and advise them and get them in touch with the right people at the city. So, they could still play, or they would still play that role, and the only role that the city would play is the roles that they played before. Police and fire are responsible for certain things with events. Public Works does some things. Legal looks over particular contracts. The city council says, yes, this is an official event, and it does look like we'll have to collect a lot of receipts and look through those receipts, but in terms of, I mean, I've put on events before, it's a really big job to put on an event, and typically, I've watched the UBA play a significant role in acting as a liaison and coordinator of events, and I just want to make sure that we're not basically creating a situation where the city is now responsible for doing all that coordination, because it's a huge amount of work, and I'm not really sure who's going to do it.
Well, you know, my understanding is that it would actually be the private promoter. They're the ones that are putting on the event. If they want to seek assistance from a local business association, that is a private thing that has nothing to do with this. This particular language has nothing to do with that. It only has to do with creating a temporary liquor license for those groups or individuals or businesses that want to put on these festivals.
Brandon?
Yeah, well, I do have some questions about it. I want to let people know, I really did not get a chance yet to speak to more people, like the mayor, Susan Tolson from the UBA, about some of the things I brought up last week, my concern with the number of days and the dollar amount, and we just planned and didn't get a chance to talk. So, I do plan to defer so we can have two weeks, because I just feel like I want to ask questions and understand it before voting. I can briefly describe just a couple of facts, as I've started to wrap my head around the situation and understand it, that I want to learn a little more about. From comparing liquor license fees, I haven't compared them to the city of Champaign or other units, and actually, if you're studying liquor license differences, maybe special events as a category, you might have some numbers on as well. I know the county, Perry and Jeff, the people talking about the brews, blues, and barbecues event, had provided some information about the county's liquor licenses, which were $75 for an event and $25 for each additional day, which is like in a totally different ballpark than the price structure we had talked about, and I still feel like maybe the sliding scale thing makes sense. There are small events, and there are large events, and they have really different budgets.
May I address that?
Oh.
We changed it, it is no longer, the $5,000 is no longer there, it's just 5%. So, it's scaled, so that if you're a small event, you're still only going to come up with 5%. If you're a large event, 5%. So, there's no fixed dollar amount, so that Ms. Chinoweth had suggested that, as well as Mr. Smythe, that we take that out, so that it would accommodate smaller events who may not have the economic ability to pay that.
Good. I got the copy on my desk, but I actually didn't read it yet and see that. Can you walk me through, are there any other differences in the latest copy?
The only differences are twofold. One was I made that change.
Great.
And the second change was just that I added in that they will cover the cost of city services. So, in addition to them having to pay the 5%, they will also, if they're using public property, and for example, Public Works or the police department have to pay overtime to have people block off the street or patrol, or anything like that, that individual has to, or that entity has to agree to cover the city's costs for that. Because, you know, they're operating at a profit, then they should have to pay for the services that they're using from the city.
I would like to point out that we also changed it, so instead of saying 120 days, it says 60 days, but I did talk with Ian Goldberg this afternoon, and I don't have any problem with putting this off for two weeks to give him a chance to comment on it. He's the only person that's going to be affected by it right now. Is that going to create a problem for anybody else?
No.
Wait a minute.
Is it going to create a problem for you? But you're not included in this, right? You're specifically exempted?
Well, if it gets passed, he's exempt.
If it gets passed?
Yeah, if it gets passed.
Well, we could do what we did before. We could pass it and then amend it if we need to. Would you like to do that?
That's good.
Better choice.
Let's do it.
Just a quick question, Mayor?
Danielle?
Just to clarify your proposal, would this basically mean we'd pass it this evening, and then we, it would be scheduled already on the committee of the whole?
That's correct.
Yes.
That sounds good.
I would like to also add that the money goes into the public arts fund, so there is some tuning up that needs to be done here. Charlie?
I would also like to put out there, remind everybody that Ron also said that this is basically a temporary stopgap until he rewrites the whole thing too, so.
Yeah, my hope is that there will be a standalone festival ordinance that will control all festivals, no matter whether they're for profit or not, because if this is something that the city's committed to encouraging and bringing to the city, then I think it would be appropriate for us to have something where all festival promoters could go to one place, and from soup to nuts, know what ordinance is controlled, including liquor and fees.
Do you have a time, have you worked out a time schedule with the mayor on that?
No.
Okay. Did we have a, oh, did we have a motion on this?
I made a motion from committee.
I'll second it.
Okay, so came from committee, okay.
Got two minutes.
All right, Mr. Robbins?
And I just wanted to add that recently, and I think it was about six or seven months ago, the city council did go back and review the relationship of holding events on the University of Illinois campus, and made an adjustment in the liquor licenses for that specific purpose, to allow the university to have events on university property in the city of Urbana. And so, we do have a history of trying to be more accommodating to allow events to occur in the city, and I think this falls within that range as well, and so I support it.
It's actually not the university, it was a university affiliated.
Affiliated, that's correct.
We don't tell the university what to do.
That's correct.
Danielle?
I support moving forward with this, and I think that changes generally allow us to move forward with this event. The one thing I'd like us to consider as it comes back, and I'll just say it now so it can be put in the pot, is to look at the history of what events have brought in, both Sweet Corn Festival, Beer and Chili, like to get a really good, realistic picture of what events can bring in, and I would generally think that 5% is actually low. If I look at, if it's a $10,000 project, it brings in $500. If it's $50,000, it brings in $2,500, I mean, in terms of gross receipts, and if it's $100,000, it will bring in the $5,000. So, I think that as we took off that $5,000, which I think makes sense, and I agree with the scaling, and I'm glad that you did that, I do think we should be looking at like 7% or 8%, like, look at something that really does make it fair for the other liquor license holders, and also brings in revenue that makes sense in comparison to the kinds of festivals and the size of festivals that we've had in the past.
I have to just put one caveat into that, and that is, because these are private entities, whether it's a not-for-profit or a private entity, I have no authority or access to their financial information. So, I can't look at that. I don't know if any of you all have sway with people who would provide that information for you, but.
Well, here's the situation. Beer and Chili Cookoff, because I was trying to look at contracts before this, just to get a sense, and the UBA used to take 25% of the profit, and so we can look at what the profit was based on what the UBA actually brought in, and then, of course, the Sweet Corn Festival, and we have to look over years, because it's an old festival and it's actually making money now, but it used to not make money. So, I think that those receipts are also available to us, and, you know, we could then, of course, you know, ask promoters in town, they don't have to tell us, but we can ask them what kinds of promotions, what they've been able to bring in. And we can also think, I mean, you know, it's a, I was just thinking, you know, you have a thousand people and a $5 entrance fee, which is about what you can ask around here, $20, $30 doesn't really work unless you have a really big act, and then you have a couple of beers, or you have a sandwich, so you start adding it up, and it's like $10 to $15 ahead of your overall cost, and then you can think about how many people are coming in. And so, that's, I was, you know, running numbers, and it's still, based on those numbers, it seemed kind of low, and we could consider what would be fair. But I'm fine with it as a 5% now, I think we need to move forward with this, support this particular festival. This promoter has been working with the city and UBA in good faith for a while, and I think it's time to make something happen in the warmer months here in Urbana.
Okay, any other comments? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Person's Barnes?
Yes.
Bowersox?
Yes.
Chinoweth?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Smythe?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Next is the motion to approve revisions to the Urbana Public Television Policies and Procedures Manual.
And for the committee, I so move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Barnes and seconded by Chinoweth. Any discussion?
Yes. Mayor?
Ms. Barnes?
Thank you. I have a constituent who asked a couple of questions, and asked that they be asked tonight to our attorney, and so I gave Ron a heads up, and so if that would be okay with the group, I'd like to ask Ron those questions and have them answer them. Are you good with that? Okay. First question, why were the hours for adult programming set at 11:00 p.m. to 4:00 a.m.? Is this a national standard, or could we limit hours even further so that adult program could be viewed from like 2:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m.?
Well, first, let me say that respectfully and unbelievably, that is not a legal question, so I can't answer why. I know for a fact that these particular videos that are the source of controversy are placed at 11:00, because the producer, Mr. Bromley, agreed to do that, recognizing the material. Beyond that, I would have to defer to UPTV Commission or to Ms. Gorman, if she knows.
Kate? Maybe Danielle would be able to speak to that better than I could. I was not there when they actually made the decision to limit that particular programming from 11:00 to 4:00 a.m.
I don't believe it was a decision. As Ron said, it was a voluntary act, and I think that in the conversation on the commission, because the content, there was sexual innuendo in some of the assertions of the content, the commission was looking into arguing that it should be kind of safe harbor times, it should be after hours, and then at that point, the proposer, the submitter, agreed to move it at that time, so further action wasn't necessary, because it was voluntary that he moved it.
Okay, the second question has to do with the prohibited programming words in the document. And it talks about any sexually obscene material or child pornography, and it's defined by applying the Miller Test, which is documented in our papers. But the question is, is that some of Bromley's materials, such as Jews fornicating young children, seem to meet this criteria. Why hasn't this been considered during these discussions?
It's my legal opinion that this doesn't amount to legally obscene material. I mean, obscenity, or the word obscene is, has two common uses. There's the legal usage, which is court-driven, you know, it's following the Miller Test, which is, Miller was referring to a case where Miller was one of the litigants, and then there's the common, everyday usage of obscenity. So, I might call something, you know, like that's an obscene amount of money, use it in that way, versus obscene for, in a legal context. I have viewed the video that made this particular reference to children and sexual activity, and taking the video as a whole, I cannot say that that would meet the Miller Test. It's just it, I don't believe that. Miller Test is a very, very high, high standard, and there is very, there's precious little material that would actually qualify, that is not the city of Urbana policy, that's not legal counsel policy, and that's the Supreme Court.
Okay. And then one final question. In Section 3.5, and in major violation, Section 5.2, there's a, this is what this question refers to, but there's a listing of five prohibited materials in 3.5, and so this is probably more, maybe more of a question for UPTV. Commercial programming, advertising, obscene material, or child pornography content that is in or child pornography content that is invasion of privacy, material in violation of FCC regulations, and then fundraising by nonprofits. And the question by Ms. Cohen is only one of these types of materials, which is commercial programming, is subject to the restrictions due to, in the major violations section. And I guess she was just wondering, why aren't all of those listed as major violations? So, the sections are 3.5 and 5.2. And her point is, is that otherwise, someone could submit some pornographic, I mean, potentially her point. I mean, I'm not sure, maybe we don't quite have that, but...
Well, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I think that the new form, A4, that's at the end of it, at the end of the packet, which requires every single submission brought in to UP-TV, not only to list if it actually does contain adult content, but what the nature of the adult content is, as well as stating that they've watched the video in its entirety, acknowledging their responsibility for the content of the video, receiving copyright clearance, and under the major violations, that is covered by falsifying forms. So, if they did not actually complete the form properly, and it did contain any of those things that are listed in the policies and procedures, then that would be considered a major violation due to the fact that they falsified the form.
Okay. Thank you for responding to those questions.
Okay, Charlie?
Well, in follow-up to what Lynn's saying, I don't see any reason why Section 5.2 couldn't also reflect the form and the items earlier mentioned in 3.5. I don't know if that's something we can make consistent on the fly, whether it has to go back to UP-TV to be fixed. Can we fix it right here so that we include in the major violations such? We could just simply take the fourth point in Section 5.2, where it says falsifying forms, and simply say falsifying forms, including all items listed in Section 3.5 and in form number such and such.
Are you making that as a motion?
I would suggest that as an amendment.
Or a friendly amendment? Is there a second?
Second. I do that.
Danielle?
Just a quick note, Charlie, if you look at, I have the policies and procedures in front of me. The list includes the commercial programming, sexually obscene material, invasion of privacy, violation of FCC regulations, and direct appeals for funds by nonprofit organizations. And if they do that, it's a 90-day extension, suspension. It says make result, okay. One-year suspension or permanent loss of equipment and channel increases. I just want to make it clear, because we have this issue. Nonprofits do things, and they don't fully understand the issue of direct appeals. And I guess I just want to not be too draconian. I think that sexually obscene material and child pornography is one thing, but... I'm pretty familiar with FCC regulations, and I'll tell you that it's a really, really tangled web. So, it might be useful for us to really understand what it is that we're punishing people for, including that, and then also with the direct appeals for funds by nonprofit organizations. Now, it's unclear to me, just in this off-the-cuff reading, if the restrictions are optional or required. I guess it says make result, no following restrictions. So, 90-day suspension looks like it's required, and then after that, there's an optional one-year suspension or a permanent loss. I'm just trying to flag the fact that we're moving things and making major violations, and we just want to understand what the consequences are on like nonprofits and...
Yeah, well, what Kate's saying is that falsifying forms includes all the items in 3.5, so you might as well state them again in 5.2 and make the policy completely clear. That's my point, you know. So, if they falsify the forms, then they violated Section... And they're violating 3.5, then we might as well include those in this section. Because this is the second or third time I've heard the same issue come up. It was raised earlier tonight, and it was raised last week. And so, it's not clear to people reading this that falsifying forms includes all these items in 3.5. I just want to make it crystal clear.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Smythe, seconded by Mr. Lewis, to include that section in another section as well.
Correct.
All those in favor? Okay. Brandon Bowers Socks?
Sorry, there was one more of the questions that some of the folks who came tonight to speak had that I thought it would be helpful, Ron, to get your opinion on, which was the sort of truth and labeling ability. We, obviously, there's a lot in the current manual revisions that takes a good step towards disclaimers and all that sort of thing. But is there any other way for us, even in the title of the show as it appears on the calendar on the city's website or appears in people's cable box when they, you know, they go through on their Comcast box and it shows what's on at different time slots? Is there any way for us to flag adult or offensive material in the titling of shows, just so that people in the public do know? They don't even have to start watching the show and get a sense of it. They do know what it is before they go into the show?
I don't think that there's a legal issue with that. I would just ask as a practical matter, who makes that call?
Right.
And it, you know, does the city have the staff? I can't speak to that, but I mean, does the city have the staff? Some person or body that's authorized, that's, you know, got the time and resources to review all material that's submitted and be able to make that sort of designation?
Okay. Yeah, that's something maybe I can talk with Kate more about, and as a future step, talk about what other sort of ways of disclaimers. Just because when people browse our schedule on the website or look at what's on, you really sometimes can't tell from the title.
Sure.
Another thing that, on that topic?
We should do with the amendment first, before we jump into the rest of the discussion.
Yeah. I'm sorry, absolutely.
Did you want to repeat what the amendment is, Charlie?
The amendment is simply to... Yeah. The amendment is simply to add in Section 5.2. I've lost my page here. 5.2, the, and the falsifying forms, basically, falsifying forms, comma, including those items specified in Section 3.5 subsection, whatever it is here, however you want to specify, 3.5, as indicated in Section 3.5, and then end on Form, whatever the form number is again?
A4.
Form A4.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now to the motion. Brandon?
Yeah. I, you know, last week, Ron, we asked about a bunch of different legal options and what was constitutional and what sort of the framework was. I still have questions and want us to go down some of those paths of figuring out how to address the programming. Things like the titling, I want to talk more with Kate about. But there's one in particular route that you and Todd were taking that was very fruitful, which was the issue of creating counter-programming, acquiring it or working locally with Todd and the Human Relations Commission on figuring out how to produce counter-programming. So, I actually would like to make a motion just to direct staff to continue those efforts with the acquisition and production of counter-programming that would run before and after this particular offensive series of programming at the 11:00 p.m. time slot.
We should probably vote on the ordinance first, and that would be a separate.
Okay.
Yeah. Unless you want to amend it.
This was sort of a motion to approve, so I was thinking we could put them both in one. But yeah, I'm happy to do that later.
We have them.
I was, do you have a motion you're going to make? Okay.
I was just going to ask Ron if I could read something he sent me, but...
Okay. I just wanted to clarify my upcoming no vote. My vote isn't against free speech, but I would be most comfortable if we would just stick with the E and the G in terms of, you know, our airwaves. So, just wanted to clarify that with you all.
Okay. Any more discussion on the ordinance, Charlie?
Yeah. I'd asked Rod and, I'm sorry, Ron and Todd. There, I can get it out right here, run the names together here. I'd asked them if they'd made any progress on it, and if I could just repeat what, if that's okay. Yeah, basically, word back came that Todd hasn't received any answers for all his inquiries yet. He's indicated that he would, and that the Human Relations Commission will, at their next meeting, be looking at this issue in terms of whether and how they could create some PSAs to air on UP-TV. And, you know, he's waiting to hear back from his contact at the ADL.
Danielle?
I have a couple of questions to mirror some of the questions that were asked tonight, and I think some will be legal and some will be for Kate. The first is, there was a question of why don't we schedule counter-programming before and after? It's my understanding from the time on commission that we, to the extent that the programming has been made available or people have submitted it, we have put programming before and after. Could you clarify what the current status is of scheduling things before and after?
Well, if an individual would like to request to show a program prior to the 11:00 p.m. time slot that Mr. Brumleavy currently has, there is currently a half an hour time slot available there, then I would be happy to schedule a program there. And there is also the 12:00 p.m. time slot after Mr. Brumleavy's program finishes that is also currently available. And if someone requested to show programming during that time, I would be happy to put it there.
Okay. And it's my understanding we were doing that last fall when there was programming available, and it came before the UP-TV Commission. The second question was why not put this at 2:00 a.m.? And I think this question actually came up with Ron last week, or was it two weeks ago? I think it was last week. And three weeks ago. And I believe, it's my understanding that we can't move things to different time slots based on content unless it officially fits the description of obscene as legally defined. Is that what your answer was? What was the, what's the answer to the question? Why can't we move this to 2:00 a.m.?
First, let me say that there's been some split in case law. It's not, it's far from, far from a bright-line rule on this matter. The question becomes, are you violating a programmer's, I hope I'm using that term correctly, the person who's bringing the video in, their constitutional First Amendment right when you are, when a government body is making a decision to move things around so that one video won't be seen as much and another video will? In other words, it is, in essence, what is the difference between that and censorship? If you put something on at 3:00 a.m., and you did it because that's the slot that's available, and there maybe there aren't any others, that's a neutral reason. When you put something on because you disagree with its content, its political or religious or otherwise protected expression, that's not neutral. And so, as a programming decision, I believe all your decisions have to be guided by those principles. You know, are we doing this because, you know, we want to chill certain types of speech, or we don't really want anyone to see it? Or are we doing it because we have a neutral, a viewpoint-neutral or content-neutral rationale? So, maybe you do have a content-viewpoint-neutral rationale for putting it on at that time.
Okay. Having participated in a number of social justice protests where the free speech zone for the protest is located miles away from the actual location of the activities, it seems like, and of course, I've been on the receiving side then of this, it seems like there has been, there's a history of containment that has been practiced by other cities. So, it's something that perhaps we could look at. And in particular, it seems like we can look at it in relation to the quantity of programming that we have. This is something I've appealed, I'm actually shocked that there isn't things going on before and after, and I would appeal to the community, which has mobilized so clearly and with so much time around this issue to flood UP-TV with programming. And to, and all kinds of programming, educational, positive. I mean, this is what we want. We want more programming, and we want lots of different things so that we can make decisions about when things can be placed on the air. Because once there's a scarcity, then there's, you know, there's content-neutral decisions that we could engage in. In terms, just a couple of other questions. Kate and I talked about three weeks ago, shortly after the first time that we discussed this as a council, about having programmers or submitters appear live and to introduce their program. And I guess I wanted to know, we haven't talked since, whether that's an option for us to request that submitters, that we shoot a short segment of them introducing so that it's very clear that they're hosting the program rather than that the city is hosting the program?
Well, I think that that would always be something we could offer to a community producer, if that was something that they were interested in doing. But I'm not quite sure about the legal ramifications of requiring individuals to appear before their programming.
Do you have comments on that, Ron? Requiring individuals to appear briefly before their programming, our staff would shoot the introduction, but they would basically be hosting the program by introducing themselves and their program. And it would be an accountability piece.
I'm going to be honest with you, I'd have to research that issue. I can tell you that some time ago, if I can try to make an analogy here, there was a case where a city was requiring, it was, they had drafted a peddler solicitor ordinance, and they were requiring people, everyone who goes door-to-door, whether it's to sell something or to hand out literature or whatever, to register with the city, provide identification, put your name, address, who you are, what you're doing. And they, the city's interest was in making sure that they didn't have any sort of criminal element going door-to-door, perhaps preying on it. And the appellate court said you can't do that. And the reason why is because the court reasoned that making someone give their name and identify themselves can have a chilling effect on protected speech. So, in other words, someone is allowed, as long as they're doing it in a law-abiding manner, to walk up and down the sidewalk with their picket sign saying, you know, "I protest," whatever. They don't have to tell everyone they meet what their name is. Now, I'm just extrapolating off the cuff here, but for that specific issue, I would probably want to do a little bit more research to find out specifically if that's something that we could require.
Just a couple of comments in thinking about this. And this has been a long process, and it continues to be a process. And I think we, as a city and as stewards of the public, could need to take very seriously speech that's on that edge of inciting something, and at the same time uphold the Constitution and the constitutionality of free speech, which I very much support. I think the analogy here is that I don't think that we would close the park for everyone because the KKK chooses to meet there every week. We would do something else. And we shouldn't just ignore the situation. But I don't think we would close the park, just like we shouldn't close public access. I did pass out a fact sheet. There were some questions about public access and how much it's used. And I'm sorry, my printer died, so I think I have you all sharing them, but...
That's right.
Basically, the phone interview that I mentioned last week, where 71.3% of Urbana cable subscribers said it was very important or somewhat important to maintain the current PEG access programming, that that was a phone interview of over 301 Urbana cable subscribers. There was a question about that. From 2002 to 2004, there was an annual average increase of UP-TV members of 67 members per year. So, in 2002, which was right before, right after I got on council, we had 12 public access members. And as of this study, which is our public access study that was done in November of 2005, we had 181 public access members in Urbana, so from 12 to 181. There were 14 camera checkouts per month when the study was conducted, about one every other day. Between April and September of 2005, UP-TV averaged... Between April and September of 2005, UPTV averaged 16.5 hours of new local produced programming per month, this is not third-party. In 2005, 115 people representing 76 organizations responded to a survey about the need for public access. 81% said they would make use of training on video production, and 91% said they would make use of support from staff to make videos. 500 people signed a petition to support public access at that time. And in 2004, 1,200 people signed a petition to Air Democracy Now!, which is third-party programming that now airs on UPTV. So I just, having been here since 2001, I kind of wanted to provide some history and some statistics of independent research on the support for public access here locally. That said, I think it would be useful to talk about what we are doing, what we can do, and what the community can do. What we are doing, if we pass this, is that we're limiting non-local programming to Urbana residents and a certain number of times per year. So, basically, this favors locally-produced programming over the third-party programming, which I think is appropriate. The second is, we're running clarification text to separate the public access from the city. We're also, at the same time, pursuing as a city, a standalone public access channel with a community board, which would include some municipal representation. It doesn't change the free speech requirement, but a standalone station would clarify that this programming is community programming. It's like a street or a sidewalk, it's a place where people are speaking, and the infrastructure is supported by this community board, but it's not the government speaking. We are, I think we should produce counterprograms as the educational part of PEG. I started to do research and found free documentation, free documentaries about Jewish history and about Holocaust, the Holocaust, and those things are available, and I will provide that information to Kate, and I'll continue to look into that. I also think we should continue to provide airtime and support for the community to respond, and to clarify, these council chambers don't belong to the council, they belong to the public. So anyone who wants to hold a forum here to discuss this programming can hold a forum in this chamber, and it's very easy to then broadcast with these, with the equipment in the chamber. We also have a call-in station in the back here, where right after, before the programming, someone can host a call-in in reaction to the programming, and it can be a talk-back mechanism to that. We also help to produce pieces, so if there's a forum that happens elsewhere, we can be called, our staff can be called, to help operate a camera, or to help assist somebody in operating a camera, and then we can go ahead and put that on the air to respond as well. So simply by having a forum on this topic produces locally-produced programming that's counterprogramming. So no dollars are required to produce counterprogramming, because you simply have to have a forum and invite people, and then there's some time commitment, but there's not a financial I have signed up for it, I got online, and I basically looked at who's talking about these issues. There's a conference happening at the beginning of June. Thanks to Robert Lewis, who's actually loaning me his conference time, I'm able to go to the conference in Minneapolis at the beginning of June. I've talked to St. Paul Neighborhood Network, and I've talked to the Minneapolis Public Access Stations, and I'm meeting with representatives from those two stations, which are some of the most popular and widely-known public access stations in the country. And so I'm going to sit down with them and ask them some of these questions, like, how did you handle this kind of situation in the past, what are best practices, et cetera? And basically, I'll bring that information back and report on it. There's also a section in this conference about hate speech. I'll be going to the hate speech section and asking a lot of the questions that have been brought up here, simply because for some of them, I still don't feel like I have answers to those questions. In terms of what the community can do, I think, you know, you bring in tapes, so, and I started a stack at home, and asked all the council members to do the same. And basically, we should be getting other programming on. In the past, we've had a lot more programming, and some of the issues that members of the public have brought up is that our, as a result of UPTV lacking staff for a period of time, so we actually had no outreach coordinator and no station manager for a period of time, and at that, during that time, you know, things slipped, we weren't following policies, et cetera. So now that we're staffed back up, we've been doing the outreach, and we've been trying to reach out and get additional programming, and kind of get back to the place where we were before, where we had quite a bit of vibrant programming. I think the city should consider producing counterprogramming, and using our staff time for that. I've also started looking at the possibilities with our arts ordinance, for us to fund programming through the arts program, to actually create programs on tolerance, Jewish history, racism, both locally and nationally and internationally, these are all things that we can do to actually fund, possibly out of UPTV fund, which is those cable subscriber fees, broadcast material that is in response to this. And so, I talked with staff briefly about this today, and I'd like some additional time to talk to Kate, and for us to look at how to produce counterprogramming. I also think the community needs to hold forums, and I'm actually surprised that I haven't heard of forums being held based on this conversation. It's a conversation that has gone on and off for three years. The programming has not been on for three years straight, but the conversation has, and, you know, I guess I would say, a model would be the mosque after 9/11. The local mosque here opened its doors, had open houses, lots of people participated in that, there was lots of dialogue, because there was hateful criminal behavior towards Muslim people in our community after 9/11. People were targeted, there was a kid beat up in a bar on campus, multiple things happened as a result of 9/11 in that climate, and the mosque responded in a way that I feel like threw the doors open, held forums, and I feel like this is an opportunity to educate the community about Jewish history and culture and teachings, because as much as we think the community may know about those things, they don't. I don't think the community, you know, we, the community knows the basics, but I think a lot of the details are lacking. And so I feel like it's important for us as a community to respond to this as an educational opportunity. I also think that if, you know, there have been claims that the city should take this to court, and I guess I would say, what, I would say, what if the community took the sponsor to court? If you want to try to create this legislation on a Supreme Court level, then, and try to create a law for group defamation, you can do that by following suit. So that is an option that you have in your hands. The city does not have to be the only entity that takes the legal option. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Dennis Roberts.
I guess I need clarification. I know that some of the intent of Daniel's discussion, and what we've been passing, or talk about passing, is to show that the city does indeed sponsor, no, that the city supports the concept of open speech, and is interested in making available, in the time slots that are available, alternative viewpoints for any programming that might be controversial, because that would allow all members of the community to submit appropriate materials to add to the debate or the understanding of topics. I don't, my, it wasn't my understanding that the city itself had a role to create new programming to counter citizens' submittals to UPTV. I understand probably that certain groups could submit material, but I didn't think that the city itself had a role in creating what might be called counterprogramming, or to create argumentative video material to combat submitted material from other people. So from the legal point of view, it's not the city's job to create counterprogramming, is it? It's merely the city's job as the sponsor of the Urbana Public Television Station to accept alternative programming.
I mean, I don't really have a legal opinion on that. I mean, it's more of a public policy issue as to how you want to do it. If you're asking me, is it, you know, illegal for a city to do that, I doubt it. If you're asking me, is it, you know, are they required by law? No. But again, I'm trying to pigeonhole that into a legal context, but it's not really a legal question, it's more of a public policy issue.
We will be getting into that. I think Brandon has a motion after this one. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Heather.
I think I'm the only one on council who might not have spoken on this. Last week, I was asked why I didn't speak, and I told the gentleman that was because I was taking it all in and listening to everybody's viewpoint, and I think that in and of itself kind of states where I'm coming from, is I want to hear everybody's viewpoint, and I don't want it to be one-sided. And I don't agree in censorship, I agree with free speech as the Constitution is written. And free speech isn't defined as a certain type of speech, it's free speech, whether it's hate speech, love speech, whatever the speech is, it's free speech. And that's where, and that's how I'm voting.
Charlie Smith.
I want to get into a couple more pieces of the actual text here. In Section 3.6, we do talk about disclaimers, and so an announcement, you know, the policy is going to be an announcement, the substantiality of one of the following three things is going to be made in advance of public access programs. So, you know, the content and opinions presented, there's certain things maybe Kate wants to get into them. How are, how are these three things going to be chosen? Who's going to determine which one? And this gets back to the issue of, you know, the public person showing up here, but we have a disclaimer system that's being set up here. How is this going to be achieved?
Well, right now, the first one, the content and opinions presented in the following program are not necessarily those of UPTV, the city of Urbana, the cable provider. The city of Urbana does not condone or endorse speech that provokes fear, hatred, prejudice, or discrimination towards any group based on religion, ethnicity, race, gender, or sexual orientation. That goes in front of and at the end of every single public access program, regardless of its content. The second one, if it was, if someone had listed on Section A4 that there was what is, what we define in here as adult or mature content, usually of a sexual or violent nature, which we define in the Policies and Procedures, and they listed that on Section A4, that is the number two, this program may be considered, is considered to be of a mature theme, and therefore may be considered offensive to some viewers.
You would pick both?
I would pick both, the first one and the second one. And then if also it happened to be of very poor quality in video, then I would put all three in front of it.
Thank you. And then my second question is, you know, we talked about adult time, but, you know, the guidelines here specifically say 11:00 PM to 4:00 AM. Was that simply the choice of the UPTV Commission? How was, where did that 11:00 PM to 4:00 AM come from? I think that's the question that a lot of people have been asking.
Danielle.
I think it's Safe Harbor FCC Broadcast Regulation, but I can't vouch for that. That, those are, that is the time period for Safe Harbor.
Oh, okay.
And so I'm assuming that the FCC regulations.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
We do have a motion on the floor, and it's been amended, and so let's vote on the motion as amended to approve the revisions to the Urbana Public Television Policies and Procedures Manual. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Beg your pardon? It doesn't say it's an ordinance. You want to call for a roll call vote?
I'd like a roll call, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just one person is enough, I believe. Okay, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Person's Barnes?
No.
Bowersocks?
Yes.
Chiniewith?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Smythe?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Next is ordinance number two, okay, oh, I'm sorry, Brandon.
So I did want to make the other motion. I know, Danielle, you'd said you were still working on a list of videos, resources from the Anti-Discrimination League, so the motion's a little vague, but I just would move to direct staff to continue with the acquisition, production, or just facilitation of counterprogramming to run before and after the 11 o'clock time slot.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bowersocks, second by Ms. Chiniewith. Ms. Chiniewith?
Just real briefly, because this responds to Dennis's question, which is the city of Urbana can choose to produce programming, and also to broadcast programming that it so wishes. And so in the past, when we wanted to promote fire safety, we produced videos on fire safety. When we wanted to educate people about recycling, we produced recycling. Also with Urbana history, we've produced programmings from scratch in-house. So, yeah, by soliciting these kinds of goals, and, you know, of course, anti-discrimination is a goal of the city's, it's also in our council goals, and so it seems very appropriate that we would request that the staff explore both acquiring as well as producing programming about tolerance and anti-discrimination issues. So I support the motion for that reason. I'll continue to send the information out to council members and Kate as I bring it in, including a report from the conference.
Dennis Roberts.
Yeah, and I understand that in general, the anti-discrimination and the larger viewpoint programming does make sense. I guess what I'm concerned is, is that the city would indulge in trying to counteract specific, oh, a specific program, i.e., it would create some kind of program that would try to nullify another program that somebody else submitted specifically, and try to maybe answer specific points with, I mean, I just don't know, it begins to border on, well, it's a different kind of condemnation, I guess, or censorship, it feels a little bit like, so I'm kind of concerned about that.
Well, we can look into that, ins and outs of that. Brandon?
I mean, I guess I would just say, in response, and because the motion was one that I made, I think I'm comfortable with that. I mean, I think I'm comfortable, at least for myself, and I can't speak for the rest of you, but saying that I find this programming offensive, I find that it is factually false, and that the city should produce, acquire, facilitate counterprogramming specifically on this topic. The shows are anti-Semitic, and I think it's okay for us, on this particular topic, to acquire and produce programming that refutes the facts in the show, to talk about the fact that the Holocaust happened, and what's the historical record, and, you know, and to also have topics about broader just inclusiveness and tolerance in our community. But I feel that it's okay to specifically produce programming on the topic that's germane to what's being run in the 11 o'clock time slot, to, in some ways, set the record straight about factual inaccuracies. So, so I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. All right, next is ordinance number 2008-04-030, an ordinance establishing a sustainability advisory commission for the city of Urbana.
The House of the Committee, the whole, I still move.
Motion by Barnes, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Person's Barnes?
Yes.
Bowersocks?
Yes.
Chiniewith?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Smythe?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Motion carries. I don't believe we have any reports of special committees, reports of officers. Tom Carino.
Evening. You should have received today electronically this month's economic development report. Just to highlight a few items, there is significant activity at Lincoln Square Village. Village, particularly in Sunday's newspaper. There was an article on the new piano bar at Lincoln Square, 88 Broadway. That is currently under construction. Calico Jewelry has just reopened in Lincoln Square, and the Common Ground Food Co-op is working on its relocation to Lincoln Square. So, all good positive changes in Lincoln Square. The Economic Development Specialist Market Director, Lisa Brawls, is working with vendors and community groups in, for the opening of the new market season, which will be, the first weekend will be this May 10th, Saturday. So, working hard to get geared up for the market season. And special census is underway, particularly in southeast Urbana. So, enumerators are out on the street, making sure that we get everyone counted in southeast Urbana, as well as some complexes throughout the city, but mostly in southeast Urbana. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you, Tom.
I got a question.
Oh, sorry, didn't see you. Yes?
Is there any news about further developments at Five Point, the Gateway Community? Have we had any developmental agreements or changes in that area?
Continue to work with property owners, both on the northwest side and the northeast side, but nothing particular to report right now.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Well, I have a report. I'll hand out the accounting for our birthday celebrations so far. Thanks to the heroic efforts of Dennis Roberts, we have taken in almost $6,000. We've spent almost $8,000, so we're down 2,000, which is pretty good for all the fun that we've had so far. So, I hope we can bounce it out by the end. And I did attend the U.S. Conference of Mayors Water Council, I think it's called. And one of their things that they had was the cost of bottled water compared with the cost of tap water. And, oh, I should, yeah, okay, here we go. I did ask earlier that, for all the city meetings that we have, water served in pitchers and cups. But this is a comparison that they did for the people on the council. And you can see that the most expensive bottled water compared to tap water of these cities listed is for Urbana, Illinois, where the bottled water costs 4,200 times more per ounce than the tap water. Now, of course, that will change if the water company gets a 60% increase, but, you know, it'll still be like 2,500 times more expensive. So, there, you know, this was all based on a study that was requested by the membership of the importance of municipal water, because there was a feeling that bottled water was being promoted as a more healthy alternative to tap water. And there's certainly no evidence, the evidence is all in the other direction, that tap water tends to be more safe than bottled water. And some of the bottled water has been bottled straight from the tap.
Yeah.
Yeah, and some of the bottles are toxic. So, one of the things, there was a woman from Mayor's Office in San Francisco, where they have said that there will be no city, not the citizens, but the city government won't use bottled water unless it's, you know, some kind of absolute necessity. And they have reusable metal containers. The problem is that if people are using bottled water, it adds to the garbage, and it also adds to the energy use. And apparently, there are shiploads of these bottles going back to China, for being reused in China in some fashion. So, that's my report. Okay. Any questions?
Oh, I saw Libby's hand, too. I don't know if this was about this topic.
We have two more staff reports, not a question.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you do have, do you have an officer's report? Okay, sorry, I didn't see you. Go ahead, Libby.
Two items, and Kelly Hartford also has a brief report. Tom's passed out an announcement for Cunningham Avenue Beautification Plan Concept Presentation, and this is a lunch presentation. We are interested in having additional participation to this. So, we've sent out this invitation to all of our stakeholders, and hoping that some of the council and plan commissioners will be able to attend. This will be May 12th, that's Monday, and interested public invited as well. 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., again with lunch at Eastland Suites on North Cunningham Avenue. And if, for the count, if you could please RSVP to Ryan Bro in our office. And we did receive this week a beautiful set of plans that show some of the public art and landscaping improvements proposed along Cunningham Avenue. So, I know the consultant CBA landscape architect is anxious to get some feedback. Also, you'll recall last fall, West Urbana was designated by the American Planning Association as one of the 10 great neighborhoods in the United States. And we shared some information at that time. There's a technical report that has just come out from American Planning Association, and I've copied for you the sections on West Urbana. It's a very nice write-up. And they'll be starting this designation process again for next year. And Kelly Hartford also has a report.
Thank you, Libby.
First, I just wanted to remind you about the funding. Matrixes for the Consolidated Social Service funding are due by May 19. You can send them to me electronically. It also, in light of the increase from Cunningham Township, the amount available is now $301,200 instead of $290, because they had a $10,000 increase.
Say that again.
It's $300,000, $301,200. Yeah. And then, the other thing is, Don Moyer's Boys and Girls Club, they presented this plaque to me on behalf of the city, since the city has funded them through the Consolidated Social Service funding for many years. And I wanted to pass this on and let everyone see. Apparently, the youth at the club made this mask, so I'm not sure where we'll put it, but it'll, we'll have it here in the city somewhere.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else?
I was going to suggest a slight change in the agenda, that we get items four and five done before we do the rest of it, since I think we have a couple people from public sitting here patiently.
Okay. You want four and five?
Yeah, let's do four and five next.
And those are done separately?
Yeah, they're separate, yeah.
Yeah, two separate ones. Okay. Robert Myers. Start with number four. Ordinance number 2008-05-034, which is the accessory parking lot in the BU, General Business, B3U, General Business University District for Vermillion Development.
Right, thank you. Vermillion Development Corporation, they're requesting a special use permit to establish an off-site accessory parking lot at 908 West Clark Street. This parking lot would be for 26 parking spaces, and this is intended to serve a three-story commercial building to be located at the southwest corner of Lincoln University avenues. And this building would be both offices, have both offices, and very possibly retail or restaurant on the first floor. The reason there's a special use permit required is because the property's located within 600 feet of properties owned in a single-family residential. And at the April 24th, 24th, 2008 meeting, the Urbana Plan Commission voted seven in favor and zero against to recommend the city council approve the special use permit, very quickly covering the criteria that are to be reviewed for each special use permit applied for. The three criteria that we normally look at, one, proposed use is conducive to the public convenience at that location. Two, the proposed use is to be operated so that will not be injurious or detrimental to the district or to the public welfare. The parking lot will have screening, and it will have no lighting, so don't have to worry about spillover of lighting. And additionally, although there's apartments on both sides, the apartment building on one side has parking on the first floor, so there'll be parking against parking, in other words. So, on the west side, there won't be parking against residences. On the other side, there will be screening as well, to screen headlights, to make sure that lights won't be shining into people's rooms where they're living. And the third criteria is that the proposed use conforms to the applicable regulations and preserves the essential character of the district. The project did receive a variance in terms of the width of the landscape strip, so that's slightly narrower, but it still allow for landscaping. And then, second, the area where it's to be located includes both apartment buildings with parking lots. So, as you're driving down the street, this won't really be changing the character of what you'd see as you're driving along the street, because there's already apartment buildings and parking lots along that street. So, with that, city staff and the plan commission recommend approval.
Ms. Barnes? I'll recuse myself from discussion and voting, because I'm a part of an organization that will be leasing from this facility.
Okay. Brandon?
I'll move approval.
I second.
Okay. I believe that Dennis Roberts was next. So, it's Brandon, Bowersocks, and Dennis Roberts seconding. Any discussion? Brandon?
I had one quick question. The, I'm glad they're using planted vegetation as the screening rather than putting up a fence. I think that's good. I couldn't quite tell from the diagram. It said in the text that parking lot tree islands were required, or planting trees in the lot was required. But then in the diagram, I couldn't tell, they didn't do, like, you know, like in Schnucks, they have little tree planter islands right in the middle of the asphalt in larger lots, like Schnucks is an example. In this lot, is it going to be just at the sort of corners and the perimeter?
One of the conditions for approval, one of the four conditions, is that the landscape buffer and the landscaping has to be submitted for review and approval by city staff, including city arborists. So, it's going to have to meet the screening requirements and landscaping requirements, both. And there is some flexibility to move landscaping towards the edges, but the bottom line is it will have to meet the landscaping requirements of city code. We're not, they're not requesting a variance from that.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Person's Barnes?
Yes.
Chinoweth?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Smythe?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Are you doing the next one? The subdivision plat, Robert Myers?
This is a request for a final plat for South Ridge 7 subdivision, and the petitioners are Carl Hill and Alan Dooley. South Ridge 7 subdivision has a little over 13 acres. They're looking at 56 lots for development to single-family homes. The property is owned R2 and R3, both of those are single-family, more single-family and duplex residential districts. The plat conforms to both the approved preliminary plat, as well as to the development regulations, and additionally conforms to the zoning, the Urbana Conference of Plan, the subdivision land development code, and the Illinois Plat Act. Three waivers were approved with that preliminary plat. They're not requesting any additional waivers. So, with that, city staff is recommending approval for this final plat.
Heather Stevenson?
I would move ordinance number 2008-05-035, an ordinance approving the final subdivision plat for approval.
Motion by Ms. Stevenson, seconded by Mr. Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Person's Barnes?
Yes.
Bowersocks?
Yes.
Chinoweth?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Smythe?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Now we know why you stayed.
Indeed.
Okay, moving back to item one, can these three be done together?
Yeah, I was hoping, I don't see any reason. They should be omnibusable.
Okay. We have, Kelly is going to go through this?
Yes. On the agenda this evening are proposed agreements for the supportive housing program, homeless families in transition. And the issue is whether to approve the ordinances approving these agreements. To give you a little bit of a background, last year on March 13th of '07, HUD issued what they call the Notice of Funding Availability, announcing the funds for this eligible program. And this is a renewal of the grant from last year. And then the city, through the continuum of care, submitted the application in June of last year. And then we were notified in March of this year by HUD that the application was approved. And per HUD, we executed, the city executed an agreement with HUD, and then we are required to then do sub-precipient agreements with each of the agencies. And so, therefore, we're recommending, staff is recommending that the ordinance approving these agreements be approved. Any questions?
I'd like to move ordinance 2008-05-031, 032, and 033 in omnibus fashion.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Chinoweth. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Person's Barnes?
Yes.
Bowersocks?
Yes.
Chinoweth?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Smythe?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Moving on to the appointments, there is an error. The appointment for Frances Baker is supposed to end in 2011, not 2008, in case you were wondering. And so I'd like to make that a correction. So, I'm recommending Frances Baker for Human Relations Commission, and the reappointment of Ron Eldridge to the fire pension board, and Greg Foster to the police pension board.
I'd like to move approval of the mayor appointments, as noted on our document.
Okay. I believe that was Barnes and Stevenson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Before we adjourn, I just want to tell you a couple of things. I noticed in New York, two things of interest. They're going to plant a million trees over the next 10 years, which is good. And if you ride in a taxi, it gives the rights of the passenger. And Charlie would be happy to know that the rights of the passenger in New York include the right to have a driver that does not talk on his cell phone, either handheld or hands-free.
Does he have to speak English?
Anyway, that's what they say. Okay. There being no further.
Well, I could add too.
Okay. Charlie wants to see.
I want to thank, yeah, just publicly thank the city for supporting Champagne County bikes, because we, I saw it tonight's paper, the show the road bus is, has hit the road. And the bicycle map is in draft form. This is a 1/8 size version, and it doesn't have the backside yet, but it's coming. It's, just to pop it out here, it's, no, it's going to be, this is 1/8 size. So, it's huge. Well, you know, yeah, there's a pocket, we might be able to do, the problem is the pocket version's very hard to read if you don't know what the roads are. But anyway, it's got the suggested routes, and, you know, they try to mimic what's been recommended by the
recommended by the Urbana Master Plan, and we're working with Champaign. And Morgan Johnston with the university is going to fill in this little inset here with the university stuff. And the flip side will have nothing at the moment, but the flip side will have a big MTD section and, and notes, how to ride safely, and the state, the routes are here.
For the MTD?
Oh, the routes of the MTD, yeah. It'll have a route map, yeah. Yes, anyway, it'll be hopefully very useful, and for those who saw the Aurora City map, that's what it's, it's patterned after. We hope, we'll, we'll have this at Farmer's Market sometime in the next month.
Okay, thank you all. This meeting is adjourned.